As the premier community in Hampton Roads, James City County strives to maintain a high quality of life for all citizens through sound fiscal management and legislative actions. In an ongoing effort to increase transparency, your Board of Supervisors holds public meetings to garner citizen input before making important decisions. Here is tonight's meeting agenda. The Board of Supervisors meeting will begin shortly.
Call this regular meeting of the James City County Board of Supervisors to order. Good evening, everyone. Before we have our roll call, I'd like to take a moment to welcome Mr. Scott Stevens as our new county administrator. He's been on the job, but this is his first meeting. And I'd like to take a moment to welcome Scott. His significant other, Monique, is here as well, and his two boys will be visiting on occasion. So I just want to take a moment to welcome you and your family here.
Well, thank you very much. A pleasure to be here.
Thank you. And if you would please call the roll.
Yes, ma'am. Mr. McGlinnan?
Here.
Mr. McGlinnan represents the Roberts District. Mr. Eisenhower?
Here.
Mr. Eisenhower represents the Jamestown District and is vice chair of the board. Ms. Sadler?
Here.
Ms. Sadler represents the Stonehouse District. Mr. Hippel?
Here.
Mr. Hippel represents the Poetan District. Ms. Larson?
Here.
Ms. Larson represents the Berkeley District and is chair of the board. Sitting to my left is Adam Kinsman, county attorney, and I am Scott Stevens, county administrator, and it's my pleasure to be clerk to the board.
Thank you. Tonight, our pledge will be led by Den One Arrow of Light Cub Scouts with PAC 103, and they are led by Eric Smith. PAC 103 is the oldest and largest Cub Scout PAC in the Williamsburg area. These scouts are in the fifth grade and are working on their Building a Better World badge, which involves studying government and the role of citizens. So if you all will come forward and lead us in our pledge and our moment of silence. But first, Mr. Smith is going to introduce everyone. Good afternoon. Yes.
This is John Walsh, our bench.
Thank you so much. If we did not get everyone, please let us know, and we will rectify that situation.
That brings us to public comment. Our first speaker this evening is Jay Everson.
Madam Chair, Jay Everson, 103 Branscombe Boulevard in the Berkeley District. Welcome, Mr. Stevens. We look forward to working with you, communicating with you. A couple of things before I get to the main topic is, about a month ago, I had a medical issue in the middle of the night, and I wanted to thank the very expeditious response on the EMS. Apparently, they couldn't come from the normal place where I live, but they got there real quick. It was like a Veraple convention. They transported me to the hospital in short order. I'm fine, but I just wanted to thank them for their great response, and also to the dispatcher, who apparently was, I don't know if it was a woman or man, I don't know. All I know is my wife said, "The person was very thorough and very calm," and I wasn't very calm. And so, there we are. So I wanted to thank you. They did a great job, and I do appreciate it. The reason I came tonight to speak was the article in the front page of the Gazette on Saturday regarding, what's it, $94 million in CIP for the schools, of which 38 million of it is for elementary school. Now, the numbers that they put in the article show us to have 87 or 82 over-capacity students by 2027. So for 82 kids, we want to spend $38 million. Now, on a macro, the situation here with the elementary schools is, let's not forget, we all think of that as K through 5, but we have a bunch of classrooms being used by Bright Beginnings. And I'm not opposed to Bright Beginnings, but it's not K through 5. And there's a number of classrooms being used there. If they were used for K through 5, we probably wouldn't have to do $38 million. Now, I know I've had an argument, talked about the annex in the past. There is a ton of space over there at James Blair for the central office. There is plenty of room at the annex to house the Bright Beginnings. That's the first point. Second point is, I know the Head Start has had longitudinal studies, and almost all of the gains are lost by the third grade. I am not aware of any longitudinal studies on the success of Bright Beginnings. I think it's important for us to make sure that if we have a program that's going to eat up space, classroom space in elementary schools, that it be effective. And that's the main thing. Second thing, on the high schools. Let us remember something. Reason that Jamestown High School is overcrowded is because the school board has refused to redistrict, because in aggregate, we are not overcrowded. In fact, Lafayette has been downgraded in football, well, all sports, but primarily football, because their enrollment, according to the federal government, is below the threshold. So they moved down. So we have War Hill and Jamestown with a higher division than Lafayette, but yet we have Jamestown overcrowded, and Lafayette under-enrolled. Before we start spending all the money they're talking on here, in here, we're talking millions of dollars to expand the high schools, how about if we use the space we already have appropriately? And I just wanted to put my two cents worth in on this. I'll be, as soon as we get the New Future Think, I'll get you the analysis again, because as you know, from the analysis in the past, we don't need any more classroom space for at least the next 10 years on their own numbers. I thank you for your time.
Good evening. Thank you, Madam Chairman, members of the board. Mr. Kinsman, welcome, Mr. Stevens. And I'm Peg Borman. I'm 17, Settlers Lane, and as per usual, I'm here to talk a lot of trash. Maybe not a lot, just a little bit. The roads are looking a little bit better. I hope that's because of our efforts, but whatever it is, I'm going to give them credit for it, because I don't like seeing all that trash out there. But we have been trying to, I say "we," the Clean County Commission, because we're a team. I don't work alone. We went along with the James City, Keep James City County Beautiful group, will be doing a litter survey on the 19th. So I'll let you know next week, next month, Ms. Sadler, if we're doing better in Stonehouse. But I'm here basically because I want to get you to save the date, November 3rd, from 10:00 to 2:00. I want to invite you all and the citizens that are here tonight, as well as the ones that might be watching us online. That's going to be our fifth annual expo hosted by James City Clean County Commission. And we're celebrating America Recycles Day, which is November the 15th, and it's going to be at Jolly Pond Convenience Center. We had it there last year, and we figured that's a targeted audience, so we're going to do it again. We have, we plan to have several, we hope, events going on. There's a new business that's kind of coming into being, and it's a recycling latex paint. We're hoping to have them there to, everybody can bring their buckets of latex paint out and recycle it. We also hope to have goodwill there to collect items, restore it, store it would be there, and a few other things. We'll have lips that are there to help us educate, because I think this time is a good time to re-educate all the people about our recycling program and the problems that we are now having. I've seen online, a lot on Facebook, especially a lot of the problems that people are, you know, their dismay about it, but we want to re-educate and do a better job of recycling. So I hope to have you all come and join us. It would be our pleasure to have you there and help us to move the education in the right direction, and it would be an honor to have all of you and the citizens to come out. November 3rd, 10:00 to 2:00, Jolly Pond Convenience Center. And thank you, and have a wonderful evening.
So, Ms. Borman, normally, we don't respond.
I'm sorry.
We don't respond to public comment, but I did want to let you know that I channeled you in the Target parking lot a few weeks ago, and I was talking to the EDA chair, so she can verify my story, as I watched a pizza delivery service open their door, crumple up a piece of paper, and throw it down in the parking lot. And I rolled down my window and said, "Hey, you need to pick that up. We have a zero litter policy here." Now, if I had to do it over again, I'd probably do it a little bit more gently, but I was so aghast that it was, it was the delivery address, and it just was like, just throw it into the parking lot versus throw it into your car and throw it into the garbage can when you get back to your place of business. I didn't call the place of business, but I will next time if I, if that happens. So I appreciate your dedication, and you're making me more aware of trash also, trash talk.
Thank you, Ms. Larson. That's, I feel like that I've at least made a little bit of an impact, because I don't know if I should tell Mr. Stevens that I talk to people at the stoplights and chase people down.
Don't tell him that.
But anyway, I do like to make sure that people are picking up their trash and keeping our county beautiful, and we are going to be the best county in the Commonwealth of Virginia.
There you go.
As long as I can keep trying.
We're trying to acclimate him slowly. We don't want to scare him.
Thank you.
Thank you. That brings us to Presentations, which is a Community Video Center staff, the NATOA Awards, and Mr. Page, how are you?
Good evening, Madam Chairman, board members, Mr. Stevens. I'm Patrick Page, Director of Information and Resources Management here at James City County. It's my pleasure to announce that on August 30th, our video staff won four government programming awards at the National Association of Telecommunications Officers and Advisors Conference in Philadelphia. Among the four were two first-place awards, a second-place award, and a third-place award. The video team received its first government programming award nomination last year, finishing third place for the Mainland Farms documentary. We put together a video to highlight all the nominated videos from this past year. Each submission was scored on a 100-point scale and commented on by a panel of judges. Included a number of the judges' comments in the videos. If you would like to see any of the videos in their entirety, they're available on our YouTube page, youtube.com/jamescitycounty. We have compiled the videos into a single playlist, which is at the front of the profile. We're very proud of the work that Brett Lewis, Randy Heisel, and Chris Williams put into these videos, but we'd also like to thank many staff members that helped with pre-production, as well as those who appeared on camera in the videos.
Thank you so much, and I know they're back there working now, so otherwise, they, but please, please pass along our congratulations.
Yes.
Absolutely.
Fantastic. We appreciate all the support you've given the department over the years. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
That brings us to the consent calendar. Minutes, adoption, September meeting, end, declared emergency, grant award Walmart 1,000, grant award Justice Assistance Grant, $10,443, acceptance of fund Virginia Forfitted Asset Sharing Program, $1,277, Veterans Affairs Supportive Housing Vouchers, $29,724, grant award Radiological Emergency Preparedness, $30,000, adoption of Debris Management Annex to Emergency Operations Plan, establishment of a full-time regular spray technician, initiation of consideration of amendments to the zoning and subdivision ordinances to address protections for the public water supply in areas of public health and water quality sensitivity. Is there any, anyone that wants to be polled?
We had a request to have an opportunity to discuss the item number 10, which I'd asked be included in the consent calendar for this meeting, and I have no objection to deferring this one until our next meeting. I will say that I think it's important for us to investigate this issue and to come to some understanding of how we need to protect our water supply, especially drinking water for a lot of folks in every part of the county that might be affected by the potential of hazardous materials getting into the drinking water. So I would move the adoption of the first nine items of the consent calendar and ask that number 10 be brought back at our next meeting.
Okay. All right, Mr. Stevens?
Mr. McGlinnan?
Aye.
Ms. Sadler?
Aye.
Mr. Eisenhower?
Aye.
Mr. Hippel?
Aye.
Ms. Larson?
Aye.
Ten Agenda Carries, nine items.
And then if you could just bring back number 10 in our work session for a discussion item?
Actually, I think there'd be an opportunity to talk offline to the folks who were, had a concern about this. This is, of course, just an initiation of consideration. There will be public hearings at the Planning Commission and the Board of Supervisors before the adoption of any new ordinance.
Sure.
So there will be plenty of opportunity for input.
Great, thank you. That brings us to public hearings. Our first one is an ordinance to vacate a portion of right-of-way adjacent to 201 Norman Davis Drive. Liz Parman is here with staff presentation.
Yes, good evening, Madam Chair and members of the board. Mrs. Karen J. Wilson is requesting a vacation of a point, of a 0.267 acre portion of right-of-way adjacent to her property at 201 Norman Davis Drive. Mrs. Wilson also wishes to purchase that portion of right-of-way, and staff recommends a purchase price of $1,300, which is 25% of the assessed value of the land. This portion of right-of-way is unimproved, and it has not been accepted into the secondary state highway system. The county's Planning Division advises that no inconvenience will result if vacated, and you can consider this application pursuant to Code of Virginia Section 15.2-2006. So before you, should you choose to accept Ms. Wilson's application as an ordinance to vacate the right-of-way, conditioned on Ms. Wilson paying $1,300 as a purchase price. And Mrs. Karen Wilson and Mr. Robert Wilson are here tonight.
Mr. Pollster is here, is our Planning Commission representative. Mr. Pollster?
He doesn't have, he-
Oh, not with this one? Oh, sorry about that.
No.
Okay.
Sorry.
All right, thank you. Sorry. Is there a motion or any discussion? Oh, yeah, thank you. Open the public hearing, and the applicant is here for questions if needed. Are there any questions of the applicant? Okay, that's the only public hearing notice we have. We close the public hearing. I'll look to the board for discussion or a motion.
Motion to approve.
Thank you. Mr. Stevens?
Mr. Eisenhower?
Aye.
Mr. McGlinnan?
Aye.
Mr. Hippel?
Aye.
Ms. Sadler?
Aye.
Ms. Larson?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you. Okay, with that, ordinance to amend county code section 12-5 license requirement. Mr. Bradshaw? Mr. Pollster, you'll be good here, too. Thank you.
Madam Chair, members of the board, good evening. I'm Richard Bradshaw, Commissioner of the Revenue for James City County. Tonight you have before you an ordinance to amend section 12-5 of the James City County Business License Code, dealing with the date of payment for licenses, moving it from April the 5th back to March 1st. The main thing on this is this will bring us back actually into conformity with all of the other jurisdictions on the peninsula and in the tide-water area, where the license tax is due on March 1st, as opposed to other dates. Be happy to take any questions you may have regarding this.
Only thing I wanted to ask, how will businesses be notified about the change of the date?
It will, it will be on the license renewals.
Okay.
We're working on the, we're working on revised-
Be real clear to everyone?
Excuse me?
It'll be real clear to everyone? Big bold letters?
I hope so.
Bright colors?
I hope so.
Okay.
In fact, we may use an extra piece of paper in there just to explain that, if that, if we feel that that's going to be what's necessary.
I think the more information that we can provide, the better.
With you 100% on that one.
That's all I have, thank you.
Is this working towards possibly doing something electronic? Is this, I take it this somewhat into responses, some recommendations that came out of what happened previously?
We are, and we are looking through our software company to try to do some things electronically. Currently, it is not available, but again, they are working on it, and several other jurisdictions are also in the mix for trying to get that, that sort of thing up and running.
Okay.
But it will not be available this spring.
Okay. Yeah, my, anything that we can do to, to help with this situation, but I just echo what Supervisor Sadler is saying, and that the more information we can push out about this, the better, so.
We will most definitely make sure that it is in highlighted, bold print, colored paper, the whole shooting match.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
No other, with that, I'll open the public hearing. Are there any questions? Seeing no question, speakers, we will close the public hearing, and with that, I'll look to the board.
Move the adoption of the ordinance.
Mr. Stevens?
Ms. Sadler?
Aye.
Mr. McGlinnan?
Aye.
Mr. Eisenhower?
Aye.
Mr. Hippel?
Aye.
Ms. Larson?
Aye.
Motion carries.
That brings us to SUP 180010, outdoor flea market at 6623 Richmond Road. Jose Ribero, how are you?
I am doing very-
Jose, excuse me. Apologize.
No worries. I'm doing very well, and thank you very much, Madam Chairman and board members. Mr. David Odie has submitted an SUP application to allow for the operation of an outdoor flea market at property located at 6623 Richmond Road. The property is split, is split zone B1, general business, the front portion, and A1, general agricultural, the rear portion, and further designated by the comprehensive plan as mixed use. An SUP is required for outdoor flea markets in B1 zoning districts. The property is the site of a commercial office warehouse complex firmly known as the Woodville Complex. On August 8, 2006, the Board of Supervisors approved an SUP request for the development of the property. The SUP proposed no additional square footage, only changes in use to the existing structure, i.e., proposed skate park. According to the applicant, the outdoor flea market would provide space for up to 20 vendors located in the parking area at the front of the complex. Hours of operation would be limited to Saturdays and Sundays from 6:00 a.m. to 4:00 p.m. No permanent structure or additional improvised surface is being proposed as part of this application. The flea market will not connect to water or near utility, and no new outdoor lighting is proposed. There are a total of 180 parking spaces available on the site, 119 parking spaces located in the front part of the complex, and 62 parking spaces located in the rear part of the complex. Since approval of the SUP in 2006, the complex has never experienced full tenant capacity. According to the real estate agent responsible for leasing the complex, the current tenant configuration includes an antique store, a youth baseball travel team, a medical equipment office and storage, and a nonprofit car club. All storage and warehouse and square footage is currently empty. Staff calculates that a total of 100 parking spaces are required to meet the parking needs of all current tenants, and that approximately 41 parking spaces will be needed to accommodate the proposed flea market for a total of 141 parking spaces. In order to ensure the availability of parking in the entire complex year-round, SUP condition number eight requires that prior to any new tenant occupying the building, a change of use application or parking verification must be submitted to the Director of Planning for review in order for staff to ensure the availability of parking spaces for all uses in accordance with the zoning- for all uses in accordance with the zoning ordinance. All pertaining agencies have reviewed and made a recommendation of approval for this SUP application. The Comprehensive Plan states that in this lightfoot mixed-use area, commercial uses should not develop in a strip commercial fashion and should emphasize shared access and parking as well as consistent treatment for landscape and architecture. Staff notes that there is no permanent construction proposed as part of this SUP. Also, the proposal will use existing parking spaces and existing landscape in the front of the northern corner of the property will be supplemented and improved. It's part of SUP condition number four for landscape. With the proposed conditions, staff finds the impacts of the proposal will be mitigated and therefore consistent with the Comprehensive Plan recommendation for commercial developments as the principal suggested use in this portion of Richmond Road. Staff finds the proposal to be compatible with surrounding zoning and development and that is consistent with the 2035 Comprehensive Plan. On September 5, 2018, the Planning Commission voted 7-0 to recommend approval of this application to the Board of Supervisors. Staff recommends the Board of Supervisors to approve this application with the conditions as presented in the IR tax resolution. I'll be happy to answer any questions you may have. The applicant is also in attendance and ready to answer any questions you may have. Thank you very much.
Thank you. The questions for staff?
Could you just maybe speak a little bit about the enhanced landscaping that will take place? I remember seeing some pictures after the Sears store closed there that didn't look exactly very well-maintained.
Right. So the area that we're looking at specifically is the northern corner of the property. The location of the, that's where the location of the proposed flea market will be. So the applicant will be submitting a landscape plan, which is going to be reviewed by staff. And we're going to work with the applicant to ensure that that area front in Richmond Road is well-screened, is beautified, to make sure that is consistent with the character of Richmond Road.
And signage for the flea market?
Signage will have to be in accordance with the signage ordinance and the zoning ordinance.
And presumably will be removable in the sense that it will only be up on the weekends or not? Wasn't anything that was particularly addressed?
That question I don't have with me at this moment, sir. But I'll be happy to provide it for you.
This is the flea market that used to be up at the area that burned.
Yes, sir.
Just out of curiosity, do we have historical information about, I mean, how large was that up there? Was it more than 20 vendors?
Yes.
Okay, so this is smaller than what it would be replacing?
It is.
Okay.
Yes, sir, both in area and number of vendors.
And we think we are comfortable with the number of parking spaces based upon past history with the larger?
Yes, sir, especially because given that it's, the flea market will only utilize parking spaces during the weekends.
Okay. Thank you.
Mr. Pollster?
Madam Chair, members of the board, as Mr. Ribeiro indicated, the Board Planning Commission met on the 5th of September. The vote was 7-0 and it did recommend approval to the Board for it. I'd ask and answer any questions you may have. Thank you.
At that, I will open the public hearing. And Millie Webb?
I'm Mildred R. Webb, Millie. I live at 202 Elmwood Lane, Williamsburg, Virginia. And I've been here for 40 years and I taught for, what, 38 years in the county. Good evening. I am speaking in favor of the Lightfoot Flea Market. We had a successful flea market at the previous location of the Lightfoot Antique Mall for over 19 years. It was 19, wasn't it? Now that the Lightfoot Antique Mall has moved to the old With Candy building, we are requesting that the flea market also be moved to the new location. Why do we need a flea market? Among other things, it is a great entertainment for locals and tourists. It's fun. It is an opportunity for people to sell their goods. For some, it is their main income. It is an opportunity for some who live way out in the county to bring in their yard sales items and have people come to that area instead of going way out into the county. It is an opportunity for some who, I already said that one, people who are downsizing need a place to sell some of their things. And this is a good place to come in and bring your goodies and downsize, which I know I need to do. It brings people looking for unique items to come into the antique mall. It is an opportunity for people to meet and visit with friends and neighbors. It is friendly and a positive experience. And I hope when you do approve it, that you will come and join and have some fun with us. Any questions?
Thank you. David Odie?
Madam Chairman, members of the board, I'm David Odie, 109 Peter Lyle, and I represent the applicant. Mr. Neil Jones and his son Chris are here. They've operated the flea market for several years and they can answer any particular questions about their plans for their operation. And I think I've sort of learned to know when to keep my mouth shut, so I won't say much. I do want to thank the staff, particularly Mr. Ribeiro. They've been very thorough. I think this case required probably a little bit more research than usual because this location was already subject to an SUP and those conditions had to be studied. And he made some valuable suggestions that I think have been incorporated. But we would just stress that this is a weekend-only operation. It'll give the location a potential commercial shot in the arm, which it, I think, could use and doesn't require any county services or infrastructure improvements. And we think it's a good opportunity. I'd offer my clients to answer any questions you have about the-
No more, we will close the public hearing and I'll look to the board for any discussion.
Make a motion for approval of the flea market. And I've been to flea markets more than one time through the years and it's very well-run and fun place to go. So it does give us another outlet for, you know, things we do in James City County.
I would just, before I ask, I just want to make sure that we work with the landscaping plan and that we get that done. So, okay, all right. Thank you. Mr. Stevens?
Mr. Hippel?
Aye.
Ms. Sadler?
Aye.
Mr. Eisenhower?
Aye.
Mr. McGlinnan?
Aye.
Ms. Larson?
Aye.
Motion carries.
That brings us to the Eastern Virginia Regional Industrial Facility Authority. Amy Jordan will give the presentation.
Good evening, Madam Chair, members of the board. I have with me today Todd Lynn with Patton, Warnom, Hatton, and Diamondstein. They are the firm that was brought on to help with the creation of the RIFA. As you recall, we did a presentation last month at the work session and sort of went through the highlights of what the RIFA was. And we are here to answer any questions that you might have regarding its formation. We do have before you the resolution tonight for the support of the ordinance and the agreement. So with that-
Thank you. Questions? Eisenhower, I thought you had a-
Well, I always wanted more of a discussion amongst the board as opposed to questions. Because I pose my questions to the fellow board members and I would rather wait until we get into board discussion.
Well, given that, let me ask a couple of questions. And first is that presumably this is an agreement that has been discussed among the localities that have been involved already. What is the status of the agreement at this point in terms of finality and ability to affect the nature of the agreement?
You talk about the organizational documents?
Yes.
So at this point, there was a process where the documents were circulated to all the localities for comments. And we synthesized those comments between the different localities with the hope that at this point, we'd receive, you know, the comments that we hoped would be necessary to receive, passage in all jurisdictions. So we've circulated what we hoped were the final documents to all jurisdictions. All jurisdictions, with the exception of the city of Hampton, have now had their initial work sessions to review and issue comments with respect to the documents. And to my knowledge, I don't think, and Cosin's probably in session now in a work session, and Hampton will be later this week or first of next week. But to my knowledge, there are no other pending comments on the documents at this point. And-
But none of the localities have yet adopted the organizing documents, is that right?
That's correct. Yeah, this, tonight would be the first actual formal vote on the documents. That's correct.
Thanks.
Do you have a deadline somewhat pending in, I think it's currently November 7th in connection with the Go Virginia funding to have all of the ordinances passed and hopefully? But, you know, that presumably could be extended if necessary.
Thank you.
With that, I'm going to open the public hearing. Are there any? All right, with that, I'm going to close the public hearing. And then I would look to the board.
Madam Chair, I sent my email to fellow board members earlier this, today, and I've had an opportunity to talk with Mr. Kinsman subsequently. My two concerns were in the agreement where the Article 4, Paragraph 1, where it requires us to have, of our two representatives, one board member shall be an elected member of the locality's governing body. It's not that I think it's necessarily a bad idea. What I'm concerned about is that we have had a proliferation of outside boards that have, in essence, sort of demanded that we participate. And it's, we're getting more and more of us involved in a lot of those boards. And, you know, I think that it should be, well, our call is to where we think we need to be putting our emphasis and our time because not everybody has time to attend all of these things. That was one issue. The more substantive issue to me was the part about the withdrawal. Any member locality of the authority may withdraw from the authority. It required a majority approval of all other member localities for the authority. So basically, not counting us, the majority of the rest of them would have to say, yeah, we'll let you go. And then, secondly, when you did that, you were pledged to pay any general dues for the operation of the authority for both the current and the subsequent fiscal year following the effective date of the withdrawal, which I thought was a little over the top. So there are some other aspects to it that I'll let Mr. Kinsman maybe answer when we get into the discussion on it. But I wanted to bring those two up. And I think there may be others that I wanted to see what my fellow board members thought about it.
Kinsman, do you want to comment now?
To what Mr. Eisenhower and I discussed were possible workarounds to both of those provisions. One, in the ordinance, it states that the board could, the board needs to select a couple of alternates. And so if that board member decided not to go, you just send an alternate. I understand from Mr. Lynn that we're only anticipating a couple of meetings a year for this particular organization. But, you know, if it became something more, you didn't want to go, then you have alternates for that. The provisions regarding on how to get out, I think, are more tied to the Virginia code and it's not something that we can just sort of switch on our own right here. In discussions with Mr. Lynn, I believe, and please correct me if I'm wrong, to the extent that you have a concern that there's going to be some operational expenses, those can't be approved without your approval. So if, for example, we sort of took a backseat, we were still in the regional authority, but you weren't really participating, there's no opportunity for the other localities to, in effect, run up a large bill that you would then have to pay off if you wanted out because you would have to approve those increased operational expenses. So you would certainly be incurring some expense if they had them and you wanted out and you're going to pay for that year and the next year. But at least in theory, you'll know about those and you would have approved them at some point in the past.
So a quick question on that. So it's in the Virginia code that we would need to have a majority of the other localities to say, yeah, you can go?
I don't have it right in front of me. I defer to Mr. Lynn on that one, but I believe that's the case. It's straight out of the Virginia code, so we can't change that absent legislative action on part of the General Assembly. But I could speak to the comments about the obligations. No operational dues can be approved without your approval. You, in essence, have veto power as all jurisdictions have to approve any operational dues and none are anticipated at this time. So, you know, our thought is there won't be operational dues to have to pay. Secondly, that with respect to any project, that you don't have to participate in any projects merely by virtue of agreeing to pass the ordinance to be a member locality within the RIFA. It simply gives you the opportunity, but no obligation to participate in any project. Third, if a project comes forward and you elect not to participate, you will have no financial obligation, no legal obligation whatsoever with regard to that project. And finally, if you find a project that you want to participate in, you will negotiate a participation agreement on the terms that are acceptable to James City County and only on the terms that are acceptable to James City County and you don't have to participate at all. But assuming that you reach terms that are acceptable to you to participate in a particular project, you will have agreed to those terms. And those would be the financial or legal obligations you have only with that project with respect to you've, with respect to which you've agreed to and entered into a participation agreement.
What would be considered a potential operating expense?
None are anticipated at this point. It's only anticipated that there will be project expenses where there will be individual participation agreements for each project. So that, again, none of the localities at this point want to have a sort of recurring operational fee to participate in this organization. You know, it's anticipated to be project-based and opt into a project you want to participate in. And if you opt into that project, you would agree to the financial and other terms pursuant to which your participation, you know, that which it involves.
So if we had, once this thing is up and running, if there was any desire to have an executive director or to have dues of some sort, the provision that says we would have to have unanimity of all jurisdictions in order to do that is, it would be what would protect us from what I would call mission creep.
Exactly. All localities would have to approve those operational amounts for an executive director.
Any discussion about an executive director? I mean, all these little spinoffs, always want to hire a director.
I understand that concern and it's shared among the other localities, to my understanding. And, you know, the thinking is that, you know, each of these localities have economic development directors and city staff that can, and county staff that can help, you know, facilitate sort of the ongoing operations. But again, because it's anticipated to be project-based, you know, only the project-based expenses would be the ones that are anticipated to be incurred at this point.
So just to make sure I understand, given Mr. Eisenhower's initial concerns, the first concern, the question of the need to designate a member of the board to serve as one of the two representatives can be ameliorated by the fact that there are alternates who may replace the board member at the board member's discretion?
Correct. Either of the two alternates you choose can attend on behalf of the elected official at any board meeting and vote on their behalf.
And if we should at any point decide we wanted to engage in Jexit, James City exit from the organization? Basically, the fact that any operational expenses would have to be approved by James City County provides a kind of poison pill, in a sense, that would say, we don't want you to be a member of this group if you're going to block us from doing anything, so of course we'll vote to let you out.
Well, I haven't thought of that in quite that way. But again, I think, I really view this as project-based. So I don't-
I understand, I'm just trying to get the sense that even though it would require- I'm just trying to, to get the sense that, that even though it would require a majority, you're protected by the fact that you don't, if you don't support operational expenditures, then they can't happen.
Correct.
I just, I appreciate that explanation. It helps me a little bit. But, you know, my, my initial concern is always exit strategy. I think everybody ought to have one everywhere. And, and the, and the other concern, too, is that we seem, you know, government seems to keep growing. We keep, we keep seeing, have a proliferation of all these different organizations and stuff, because if you take a look at the additional duties that we all pick up here, it's, it's pretty hefty. We're involved with a lot of other organizations, and it takes quite a bit of time and effort. And I want to make sure that when we do it, we're doing it for exactly the right reasons, and that it's to the benefit of the county and as its citizens.
Well, in fairness, we did get rid of sanitary district number two at some point in the last couple of decades.
And I think for the, for the citizens out, out there that are watching tonight, if I turn this on right now, I'd be like, what are they talking about? And this is basically, to put it in a nutshell, a regional effort to move economic development for some areas that may not have the land, may have the cash, someone else may have the, the land and not the cash, they can go together to move an economic project down the road further. And so you can opt to go in with another county or another city and use your resources that you have in order to bring economic opportunity to this, to the area. That pretty much puts it in a nutshell for the citizens out there.
Yeah, I think that's correct. And as well, you know, hopefully, as a resident of James City County, my hope would be that it's an opportunity through regional cooperation to attract some big projects to the area.
Right. And I think that's, that part probably we missed in the beginning was, was explaining that to the citizens, that, that this is what this program's about, is working together regionally. But, you know, us as a board are always looking at, how do we protect our citizens? And what do we need to do for our citizens? But this is, this is more an effort to reach across lines and use the resources in different localities to bring a larger project into the region.
Exactly. And it's the opportunity, but not the obligation in any respect.
Right.
So you only participate if and when you so choose.
That's right. You don't have to, you can sit it out and let, let the others do it or, or join in.
Absolutely.
So, thank you.
So if I can just follow on the, on the process, first of all, just a brief understanding of, to the degree to which this particular initiative is sort of entirely stimulated by Go Virginia, is, or is that just the thing that kind of brought the opportunity to our attention?
It is sort of what brought it to our attention. The RIFA has been done in other parts of the state. There are several RIFAs that have been done in the western part of the state. This was brought because we did agree to a resolution of willingness for a Go Virginia grant. The Go Virginia grant was awarded in $150,000 back in February. This was for the Unmanned Systems, Unmanned Systems facility on Penniman Road in York County. So the first step in order to be able to participate in any project like that, if locality chooses, is to have a RIFA. That is what the state code provides as the mechanism in order to jointly participate in a regional effort. So, again, that brought that to our attention. That is basically the mechanism for us to be able to do a project like that and utilize Go Virginia funds, which, you know, Go Virginia funds are set up in a way so that they are multi-jurisdictional. What is unique with regard to this particular Go Virginia project is we also have now engaged Gloucester. They are considered as a separate region from the rest of the potential jurisdictions. So that actually opens up the opportunity for additional funds that would not be available if it was just a singular region. So, again, continuing to reach beyond lines for participation there. But again, you know, as Mr. Lynn said, this just creates a tool in your toolbox for participation. It doesn't obligate you for anything. So it's just a seat at the table, so.
And then you indicated that the previous work sessions that have been held have not produced any changes in the documents that you're aware of. We've got two more that are still in process on work sessions. Suppose one of those does come up with something that they want to see changed, that would require this coming back to us for a consideration of the revised document, if that, if that was agreed to?
That's correct. That's correct. I mean, we hope to have fleshed out comments, you know, at this point, but that is theoretically possible, not anticipated. The initial indication from Newport News, which happened earlier, was that there were no comments to the documents, but Cosin, I think, is underway now. Prediction that his work session is Hampton.
And Gloucester did theirs.
Gloucester did theirs. Williamsburg was last night.
And York County.
Thank you very much. Kenny, close it.
I'll call whether you close it. Go ahead and close it again.
We'll open it. There's no cards. We'll close it. There's no cards. Any further discussion among the board?
I would, I would add that I, you know, I had some concerns. I think I'm satisfied that they're constructive workarounds. I think that the basic idea is a good idea, and I think I'd be happy to support it. I just wanted to make sure that we had all of the little details talked about before we did it.
Motion?
Motion for approval.
Mr. Stevens?
Mr. Eisenhower?
Aye.
Mr. McGlinnan?
Aye.
Ms. Sadler?
Aye.
Mr. Hippel?
Aye.
Ms. Larson?
Aye.
Motion carries.
That brings us to board considerations. Contract award for Sklen neighborhood drainage repair, 209,832. Rick Cale is here to give the presentation.
Thank you, Madam Chair, members of the board. Mr. Stevens and Mr. Kinsman. The resolution before the board this evening is for the award of a contract for the Forest Glen Neighborhood Drainage Repair Project. This project will repair some existing stormwater infrastructure, as well as install some new infrastructure within the Forest Glen neighborhood. And this work will take place at five different sites throughout the neighborhood. Project was advertised to the public, and the county received five bids for the work. The lowest responsive and responsible bidder was David A. Nice Builders Incorporated in the amount of $209,832. David A. Nice Builders Incorporated has performed satisfactory work for the county in the past of a similar nature. This project is funded through the Stormwater and Resource Protection Division Capital Improvements Program Budget. Staff recommends approval of this project. Now I'd be happy to address any questions the board may have.
Thank you.
I was just trying to orient myself on the map here, and I guess this is top is north. Where is, I'm trying to place this where, in the community, where Richmond Road is and how far it is off of Centerville Road.
Centerville Road, looking at that, just to the left would run parallel north-south, I guess you would say. It's just off the map. And that Forest Glen Drive is that main road coming in from the left side of the map.
Okay. It comes off of, because most of the interests of this community are off of Centerville Road. Okay, so Centerville Road is on the left, then?
Yes, sir.
Okay, all right. That, your little diagram at the top shows north that way, and it's got me a little confused as to, all right.
Well, now, this is, this is in my district, and I know it's a much-needed improvement for that area. And there's a lot of, the area back there that floods and, and has given a lot of difficulty for the neighbors, so I'm glad that it's coming forward in order to take care of some of that water mitigation and, and keep some of the, not only the stormwater under control, but also mosquitoes down as well. Hopefully, this will improve that for that neighborhood as well, so, thank you.
Motion?
Motion.
Mr. Stevens?
Mr. McGlinnan?
Aye.
Mr. Eisenhower?
Aye.
Ms. Sadler?
Aye.
Mr. Hippel?
Aye.
Ms. Larson?
Aye.
That brings us to resolution approving a plan to finance and refinance certain public facility projects through the assurance of revenue and refunding bonds by the Economic Development Authority of James City County. Sue Mellon is here.
Thank you, Madam Chair, members of the board. Tonight you have a resolution that will request the Economic Development Authority to issue lease revenue and refunding bonds in the amount up to $25,400,000. This is slightly different than you've done in the past, where we have a combination of both new issue and refunding issue. And the refunding issue is related to the outstanding principal balance of the 2009 Build America bonds that were used to finance the police building and the fire administration building on Route Five. We are taking this opportunity. Recent changes in the tax laws have eliminated the ability to do advance refunding, so you must do refunding within a window of the call date. And the call date is in January, and so the plan is to issue these bonds in November, assuming that the interest rates will still make it favorable to do so. The remaining amount of the bonds, $15 million, has been included in your capital improvement budget, and that is for various fire apparatuses, which are upcoming on your agenda for a contract award, and also for some school purposes. Have Mr. Chris Culp here from our bond council to be able to give a little bit of an overview of the overall process, your role, the EDA role, and the financing mechanism of lease financing. Thank you.
Thank you again. My name is Chris Culp from Huntington Andrews-Curth in Richmond. It's my privilege to be in front of you tonight, and I appreciate the continued opportunity to serve as the county's bond council. You had before you consideration, for your consideration tonight, the resolution, as Ms. Mellon mentioned, approving the financing and refinancing. And I thought for the benefit of the board, as well as for the audience, it might be helpful just to give some context and describe some of the financing structure and the documents that are involved. As Ms. Mellon mentioned, this is really a financing that would be undertaken by the Economic Development Authority, the county's Economic Development Authority. It's part of their role under the Virginia Code to be an assisting conduit issuer for the county to be involved in these sorts of financings. It's a way to sort of accelerate or economize the ability to get into the, the bond market pretty quickly, and it's an efficient financing process. So their role would be as a conduit issuer. But the borrower would be the county, the county's credit is really what is behind this financing. And so there will be a role, a prominent role, obviously, in the documents for the county to play. And the county's payments under the financing structure are what will be used by the EDA to pay debt service on the bonds. There are no other EDA facilities, no other EDA funds at risk in this. This is just a pledge of whatever payments that the EDA receives from the county for this project are what are pledged to pay the debt service on the bonds. As Ms. Mellon mentioned, this is both a combination, new money financing and a refinancing of the 2009 bonds. The documents involved, we put in place, some of you may recall, in 2016, when the county did its last lease revenue financing, we put in place kind of a master trust agreement and a master financing agreement, so that we could come back and, and be a little bit more efficient in the legal documentation by just doing supplements. So the master trust agreement, initially in 2016, set up, the various funds and accounts set up, the structure by which the different series of bonds could be issued, and then we come back with a supplement each time under that existing structure. So the supplement, in this case, will set forth the particulars of this series of bonds. So when the, the bonds are priced, and we know exactly the, the interest rates and the final principal maturities for the different bonds, and whether they're serial bonds or term bonds, and all those sorts of details, and the redemption provisions, those will be set out in the supplement. The, there will also be a supplemental financing agreement, and this is really to provide for the county's agreement, well, first, the, the EDA will loan the proceeds of their bonds to the county under the financing agreement, and the county will agree to repay that, that loan equal in an amount and time to pay the debt service on the bonds. Financing is also being done as a public, public offering, very similar to what the county's done in other contexts. So these will be bonds that are issued to the public. The preliminary official statement is the document that, that we've put together, together with county staff, to describe the financing, and in particular, in the appendix, to describe economic, financial, and other information about the county. Because, again, the county is the security, the credit behind the financing, and so that's what the bondholders are interested in. What is, what is, what are they buying? What is the credit? And so we have an appendix describing the economic, financial, and demographic information about the county in that appendix. And so we've been working over the last several weeks with county staff and with the county's financial advisor to put that information together. There's a notice of sale. If this is going to be done as a competitive sale rather than a negotiated underwriting, we have a notice of sale. And these documents are being sort of presented to you to provide some context to the deal and are being approved as to form. And you will be, through the resolution, delegating to county staff to finalize the, the documents, and then we will use them as we go to market. The, the rating agencies, while they certainly have given a strong credit rating to the county, like to see the, the bonds backed by some lease collateral. So that's why this is being set up with a lease revenue sort of component to it. So we have a ground lease and we have a financing lease. We're using the facilities that were the subject of the 2009 financing and continue to use those as the collateral for the 2018 financing. So that's the police station and the fire administration building. The fee simple ownership of those properties are never going to be at risk. What this has set up is a leasehold financing. So if the county were ever in an unexpected situation not to pay debt service on the bonds, then you would lose your access to those buildings for the term of the, of the ground lease. Nobody, obviously, anticipates that, but that's what is helpful to the rating agencies and the bondholders, to give you a sort of a better interest rate on the deal. The resolution going through Paragraph One, and in particular Paragraph Four, is setting up the basic parameters of the financing, the not-to-exceed principal amount, the maximum maturity date, the sort of a not-to-exceed interest rate, interest cost on the bonds. And so we certainly expect that the final pricing parameters will come within those, within those terms. The resolution sets out, the, the basic security here is the agreement for the county to make the debt service payments. These are subject to annual appropriation, so this will be part of your annual budget You have a sort of typical tax covenants as a part of the resolution. These are being issued on a tax-exempt basis, and so we have an agreement by the county that they will do their part in making sure that the use of the proceeds, the use of the projects themselves, we done in a manner that's consistent with the tax rules to allow the financing to be done on a tax-exempt basis, and the interest to the bondholders to be done on a tax-exempt basis. These are governmental projects, so I don't envision any reason why that would be any cause of concern or anticipate any problems with that, but that's part of the, the financing process. I think that's, those are the sort of major items in summarizing the resolution and sort of the financing structure that you have before you for consideration. Again, this is a request by the county that the EDA take action to issue the bonds. The EDA has a meeting coming up later this week to consider their resolution. They're also approving the basic forms of the documents, but they're looking for the county board to sort of give them direction, that this is a project that the county wants to pursue. This is a financing that the county wants to pursue.
And one question is, because you have two aspects here. One is a, basically a refinancing of those Build America bonds, which were issued, what, in 2009?
Yes, sir.
Okay. What was the maturity length on 20 years or 15, what, what, on those Build America What was the maturity length on 20 years or 15 on those Build America Bonds?
20 years, I believe, from the original issuance.
Okay, so now we're refinancing. Is this new refinancing going to be another 20 years, like when I refinanced my house? Or is this going to be still the same maturity date, so that we're still going to be paying it off in the same time period? It's just that we're refinancing for a better interest rate?
It's a combination, new money and refinancing, but the portion of the financing that's being used for the refinancing piece of it will be matched maturity, so it's not extending that piece.
That's...
There is actual, you know, debt service savings on an annual basis. Thank you.
Just, it's a remarkable document.
It was a lot to read.
And a lot of very, very useful and interesting information about the county, put into a nice summary form. Did I understand that this is going to be a more challenging and perhaps not available test in the future?
Well, as Ms. Mellon mentioned, the advance refunding, ability to do advanced refundings was taken away with the tax changes effective January 1. So a lot of localities, the county included, got some of that done last year, just to take advantage of the opportunity. Current refundings, which are meaning that the proceeds can be used within 90 days to redeem an older set of bonds, those are still allowed, and that's what this is taking advantage of. But the county, like other localities, will not be able to do advanced refundings, where sometimes the redemption date was a year, two years, three years out. That's not allowed by law anymore on a tax exempt basis.
I'll get into that.
Got all that?
Yep.
Okay. Any other discussion, or is there a motion?
I'll make the motion to approve the, is it an ordinance or a resolution? Resolution.
Thank you. Mr. Stevens.
Ms. Sadler?
Aye.
Mr. Hippel?
Aye.
Mr. McGlinnan?
Aye.
Mr. Eisenhower?
Aye.
Ms. Larson?
Aye.
Motion carries.
That brings us to contract award replacement fire apparatus. Chief Ash?
Good evening, Madam Chairman, members of the board. We're before you this evening with two contract awards. The first is for replacement fire apparatus. That replaces three of our vehicles. One is a ladder truck currently stationed at Fire Station 3, and the other two is a ladder and a rescue vehicle for Fire Station 1. So our truck committee, which is made up of members of both our career staff and as well as volunteers from the James City Bruton Volunteer Fire Department, have been working for the best part of a year on specifications and the contract documents for those vehicles. And the proceeds of the bonds we just mentioned would pay for these vehicles. They all have a 20-year expected life, and they are under budget. And if we take advantage of the prepayment discounts listed in the memo, we get some of that savings back to put towards equipment for those vehicles.
Thank you. Questions?
I have one question. It's a firehouse question. How much chrome is going to be on that truck?
No chrome.
It's an inside joke with Park.
He's just supposed to be able to see himself real good in the reflection.
I understand. I understand.
Yes.
Separate contract award also for the replacement of an ambulance, which is currently slotted to go to Fire Station 3 as well.
Thank you. All right, so I would look for a motion for the replacement fire apparatus at $3,232,945.
Motion.
All right. Mr. Stevens?
Mr. Hippel?
Aye.
Ms. Sadler?
Aye.
Mr. McGlinnan?
Aye.
Mr. Eisenhower?
Aye.
Ms. Larson?
Aye.
Motion carries.
And I would look for a motion for contract award replacement ambulance, $259,653.
Still move?
All right. Mr. Stevens?
Mr. McGlinnan?
Aye.
Mr. Eisenhower?
Aye.
Mr. Hippel?
Aye.
Ms. Sadler?
Aye.
Ms. Larson?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Before we move to board request and directives, I'm going to pass it down for JCSA.
Call to order this regular meeting of the James City Service Authority Board of Directors. Good evening.
Good evening.
Could you call roll?
Mr. McGlinnan?
Here.
Mr. Eisenhower?
Here.
Mr. Hippel?
Aye.
Ms. Larson?
Here.
Do we have any speaker cards this evening? Public comment? Nope, no. All right. Consent calendar, minutes, adoption, September 2018 meeting.
Motion for approval?
On favor?
Voice vote.
Voice vote, on favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? We're good. Any public hearings? None? Or considerations? Contract award lift station 1-7 replacement, $920,000. Mr. Powell?
Thank you. You might recall that in February you approved a property exchange with QuarterPath Williamsburg to facilitate this project, which involves the demolition of an existing lift station on Pocahontas Trail that is at the end of its useful life, and the construction of a new lift station on Battery Boulevard. Before you tonight is a resolution to award the construction contract. Shaw Construction was the low bid with $920,000. They have, they were prequalified, they were the low bid, and they have successfully completed work for the service authority in the past. I recommend approval of the resolution.
Any discussion?
Move the adoption of the resolution?
Mr. McGlinnan?
Aye.
Mr. Eisenhower?
Aye.
Mr. Hippel?
Aye.
Ms. Larson?
Aye.
Ms. Sadler?
Aye.
Board of Quest and Directives, anybody? Anything?
Only item I have for General Manager's update is I would recommend that the board amend its meeting schedule to add a meeting for October 23rd for the purpose of performing my annual performance evaluation.
Move the amendment to our calendar, as suggested by the General Manager?
Vote on that.
Voice vote is fine.
Just for clarification, it's October 23rd at 4:00.
Okay.
October 23rd, 4:00.
Thank you.
23rd, 4:00. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Carries? And then, is that all you had?
That's all I have.
That's all you had for that? So I'm looking for a motion to adjourn until 5:00 PM on November 3rd. Oh, no. Until October 3rd.
October 23rd, so move.
October 23rd at 4:00 PM.
Correct.
So, motion?
Bow.
Mr. McGlinnan?
Aye.
Mr. Eisenhower?
Aye.
Mr. Hippel?
Aye.
Ms. Larson?
Aye.
Ms. Sadler?
Aye.
All right. Thank you very much.
Thank you. That brings us, to all bring us back into session, and that brings us to board request and directives.
The chief has left, because I promised that I would wear this when I went to the open house at the fire station on Saturday. It was great. I was there in the first hour, and there were already 100 young children that had gone through Fire Station. So it was a wonderful day, lots of things going on in town, but...
Oh, you got to put it back on, so he can see. Yeah.
I did what I said I would do, chief. And it was great to see so many residents of the community expressing their appreciation for our fire department and enjoying the opportunity to get out and learn more about fire protection. And for me to get out and say hello to our dedicated responders and thank them for the great job that they do. I would also pass along that they were very appreciative of the board's action recently as it relates to a change in our pension calculations. And also had the great opportunity to tour much of the Roberts District with our new county administrator. We had a nice trip, and he was willing to put his life in my hands, which, as you all know, is a fairly dangerous option, because I drove. And...
Did he get Santa? That's the only question we want.
Yeah. I'm sorry.
I was just asking if Santa Claus was safe on...
Santa Claus. Santa Claus hit me, although...
Okay, okay, sorry, sorry.
And finally, just to mention the opportunity to be there for the dedication of our new middle school, James Blair Middle School, with several other board members and Mr. Stevens. It was a great opportunity to see that building come to completion, and it looks like it's already serving wonderfully for the students and teachers who are utilizing it.
Thank you.
Since our last board meeting, I managed to slip away for about 12 days to Europe and spend a little time in England, and I brought back one observation, besides the fact that they're having...
That you're bringing back presents for us.
No, no, no presents. No presents, just an observation. I brought back debts. Besides the fact that they're having a weather about like ours, no rain and very, very dry, I did see a sign on the lawn at Sandringham, the Queens residence at Sandringham, that said, apologizing for the appearance of the lawn because of the heat and the lack of water, that they're reseeding this fall. So they're having the same kind of thing we are. But they, I did notice that they have a very interesting approach to development. I don't know how they do it, but for over hundreds and hundreds of years, the boundaries of their little villages don't seem to expand too much, and they have tremendous open space. It is just one of the most refreshing things to drive through or take a train ride through that countryside and see how they have preserved their countryside. So that's something we can need to aim for. Attended the school liaison committee meeting with Ms. Larson earlier this month. We had a Greater Peninsula Workforce Development Board meeting, was an annual meeting, then attended on the 27th as well, that, in which we signed a regional agreement between two of our workforce development regions to collaborate between the South Side and the peninsula, which is a first. It's unheard of, and I think it'll be beneficial to our area. Did attend the Blair dedication. I would add one thing, is that the young lady who sang the National Anthem was awesome. Absolutely beautiful, and their program was very good. Couple of things for folks' information. We now have the ability to get real ID driver's licenses, which will be the ones you can, starting first of October, you get your driver's license, you get qualified, it'll be suitable for use for boarding airplanes. At the same time, we also have the ability for veterans to get the veteran identifier put on their driver's license as well. That can be done at our local driver's license, the local license DMV. You can also do it online, it's a little more cumbersome, but it can be done either way. One other thing I did this recently, on October the 4th, was at my local Vietnam Veterans Chapter 957 meeting. We have, from the United States of America Vietnam War Commemoration Commission, the Vietnam Veteran Lapel Pin. And we did a ceremony where we awarded about 30 of these to James City County residents and local residents. Each living veteran who served at any time on active duty in the United States Armed Forces, regardless of location, during the period November 1st, 1955, to May 15th, 1975, is eligible to receive one of these lapel pins. And it's very highly prized, I think, amongst the Vietnam veterans. We have a schedule right now to do a dedication and presentation ceremony for a bunch of Vietnam veterans at Colonial Heritage. And then if anybody in the community would like to have their neighborhood honor their Vietnam veterans, please contact me, the local Department of Veteran Services office, and I will be glad to attend and conduct that ceremony for you. I have a big bag of these things, so it's really a privilege to be able to do that. And at the risk of jumping the gun, Jason, I believe we are attempting to organize a little different ribbon cutting. It's not a ribbon cutting, it's going to be a rock bashing on the Monday, the next Monday.
Yes, but no rocks will be hurt.
No rocks will be hurt. We are going, we are going to start by taking the first rock out of the cobblestones in Newtown and getting that project completed and repaid, so...
My car thanks you.
Yes, everybody's car thanks you. And then for some of the residents in my community, my district, in Powhatan Secondary, Section 7C, assuming that the next hurricane doesn't mess up the paving schedule, they should be starting the repaving of those, the final paving of those roads, the renovation and paving of those roads on the 22nd of October. And that's all I have. Thank you.
Well, I'd like to say welcome to Mr. Stevens. We're so happy to have you. I did have the opportunity and pleasure of meeting with Mr. Stevens this week, and we got to talk about all kinds of fun things that happen in the Stonehouse District. Some of the events that I attended recently, first was a ribbon cutting for the Kensington School out at Hickreneck, and we're so thrilled to have them as part of the community up our way. I attended an informational community meeting for, at the library, for the new walnut farm development. And I attended a manufacturing day tour with the Ward Hill High School students the other day. We went to the Nice Wood Plant in Owens, Illinois, up in the Stonehouse District. It was fascinating. The kids were very engaged, they asked lots of great questions, and I found the whole thing fascinating myself. And I do have a sad note, and I would like to extend our sympathies to the Ware family on the passing of Martha Ware, who passed away this past week. She was the matriarch of Tohano. She passed away at 96, I believe. She was better known as Shug to everybody up our way. And she had the distinction of being related to Abraham Lincoln. Her great-great-grandfather and President Lincoln's grandfather were brothers, and she lived in the oldest house in James City County circa 1700. And she will be greatly missed. I was able to attend the, her funeral the other day, and there were just amazing words that were spoken about her, as you can imagine, and she'll be greatly missed, and we'd like to extend our deepest sympathies to her family. And I think that's all I have.
Hey, I'm a HR tech, VDOT, and special meetings with special advisors for the Hantler Rose Bridge Tunnel. I've been attending more of those than you can imagine. Seems like they're every other day, but we're getting a lot completed, and we're on a very tight schedule in order to make sure that we keep funds in our region. So I'm working very hard on that. The fish fries this Saturday for the volunteers. So if you're up in Tohano area, please hop out to the fish fry, get yourself some fish, hush puppies. It's always a good time, and it's a good time to meet the volunteers and the paid staff up in James City County's upper end. So they're always glad to see everybody come out there. Mr. Scott, congratulations. Hey, thanks for coming and look forward to it. I know I haven't had a chance to get out with you, but we're going to get together on Thursday, and we'll go look at our area, my little area up there and see what we've got. So thank you for coming and look forward to many years of you being here, 20 or 30, if you're thinking.
Maybe not 20 or 30, but a while.
Thank you very much. Also, a couple of, you know, birthdays. My son, Michael Jr.'s birthday was yesterday, and my other son, Samuel's, will be tomorrow. He'll turn 16, so I wish them a very happy birthday.
I'll turn 16 tomorrow.
Who are you? I didn't know you had the same days.
Yeah, how about that? I don't want to go through the whole calendar, but I do want to point out a couple of important things. One, Saturday, Thomas Nelson will be celebrating their 50th birthday, and Supervisor McGlinnan will be representing us there along with Ms. Jordan and members of the EDA, and I appreciate you doing that very much. It's a very, it's an important community partner, and so thank you for doing that. I wish I could go to the fish fry. I'm going to be in Blacksburg for my daughter's first collegiate meet, just, yeah. But, just thought I'd throw that in there. I do want to mention that Supervisor Hippel and I went down to the food bank to work on Elected Officials Day, and with the closing of Farm Fresh, they are down, I believe, was it a million pounds? They are, have taken a huge hit because of the closing of Farm Fresh. So I would encourage you, you know, we all get into food drives when it's the holidays and that type of thing, but please reach out. They have great partnerships with Harris Teeter, Food Lion, so they are still receiving donations, but any help that you can give would be greatly appreciated, and they serve our backpack program here with our schools and fill other needs as well. So please, please keep the food bank going if you can. I want to mention the school liaison meeting. There was a speaker that spoke earlier about some facility needs and say that we are having a joint meeting with them on December 6th ahead of budget, which I think this is one of the first times that we've done this, where we're going to hear about what their CIP looks like. And we have also been working through the school liaison to work with our city Williamsburg and with the school system on deciding what, what is something that we can all agree to as far as enrollment numbers. And what, thanks to Supervisor Eisenhower, did a lot of research and a lot of data, we, the closest that the numbers have been, have been on low enrollment projections, but they have been almost right spot on. And so that is what they are using, and so when they are talking about what they are looking for in the future, so I just want to, you know, this, there is some science behind what they're asking for. And so they are going to talk to us about the capacity and utilization and some things that they're going to be coming up. That's what we will be dealing with on December 6th. But they also asked us about putting on our legislative agenda... But they also asked us about putting on our legislative agenda primaries and moving primaries so that for, they've been getting a lot of pushback because schools are open during, it's very hard when you're trying to get 180 days between after Labor Day and before you close schools. So, to close schools in June for a primary day is very difficult, especially you just don't know what the weather's going to do. And so, they have asked us to work with VACO and with ourselves to encourage that to be moved back a week, right? So, we will be doing that, and the other thing that we are going to work with them on, the chair of the school board and I are going to work together with the public information people from the City of Williamsburg, the schools, and Ms. Dahlman, and we're going to come up with a plan for some outreach to the real estate community that we think is needed about, you know, we have high-quality schools across the board, and what's a good way we can work at getting that message out? So, we're going to be working on that, but I wanted to make sure to give you all an update on that. The Tourism Council continues our work there. There is also a chamber meeting tomorrow morning, so trying to, you know, we've got to work all this out, you know, when you're taking a chamber that was a chamber in tourism, and now you're taking a chamber and it's a business, but there's also an umbrella with the tourism, so there's a lot of, there's a lot of moving pieces in board, I mean, going on. So, one other thing that I do want to mention is that I was invited by the Stormwater Program Advisory Committee to do a tour of stream restoration projects in the Mill Creek watershed, and I was able to go along with that, and I was incredibly impressed at what they've been able to do. And I, I've taken some pictures, so I'll work to get those sent to you. But the hard work that our staff folks have taken on is just incredible, and the product that we're left with and what they're, what they're able to do to clean those areas up, and it's just, it's so instrumental for the county, and I just appreciate it so much. So, I appreciate Ms. Geisler making sure that I received an invitation to that. I think that's about it. So, I'll catch you all up next time if it wasn't. And I also welcome you, Mr. Stevens.
Happy birthday.
Thank you, yeah. Thank you very much. And with that, that brings us to the County Administrator's Report. Mr. Stevens?
You know, a couple of comments this evening. I do want to say thank you for the warm welcome. That's been true of everybody, community members, employees, and certainly the Board of Supervisors, and I want you to know I'm excited to be your county administrator. I'm here because I want to be and because you wanted me to be, so I'm really thankful to that, to each of you, for placing your confidence in me, and I will work hard to meet your expectations. You know, it's day seven for me in terms of workdays. I want to thank the staff members that have helped me thus far. They have been extremely patient with me. I have a lot more to learn about James City County, but our staff is great, and they're getting me there, and it's sinking in slowly, but it is sinking in. Interim County Administrator Bill Porter and our illustrious county attorney, Adam Kinsmith, have both been very helpful prior to my arrival and since I've been here. And as you know, Bill Porter spent a couple extra days that he meant to be retired, really here, helping me through, and he dumped a ton of information from one to the other, but he did give me his number and said I could call at any time, so I'll do that. I do appreciate their willingness to help me move into this role. It has made the transition much, much easier. I've been meeting with employees, community members. I have a lot of names to remember, a lot more to meet, to the community members and business leaders that I have not yet had the pleasure of meeting. I look forward to meeting each of you in the coming days and weeks, and encourage them to call me if I can be of service, ahead of those meeting dates or after. I do appreciate and enjoy working with people that are involved in the community, and we seem to have a lot of involved people here, so I'm really excited about that. I want to thank you again as a board for giving me the opportunity to serve the community. I'm ready to build upon all the momentum you have here, and there is a lot to make it go better and better. So, again, I look forward to that. A few housekeeping items. Mr. Porter's report was in your agenda package, and then a few other things to highlight. I think we do have some amendments to your board calendar. Two dates need to be officially added. November 11th, 2018, at 10:00 AM, several members will be attending the VACO Conference at Homestead Resort in Hot Springs, Virginia, so that is one item. And then, December 6th, 2018, at 8:30 AM, a joint meeting with the school board, as Ms. Larson had mentioned, at the Stryker Building in the City of Williamsburg. And I do think we need a motion to make that change or addition to your calendar.
Motion.
Thank you.
Sadler?
Aye.
Mr. Hippel?
Aye.
Mr. Eisenhower?
Aye.
Mr. McGlinnan?
Aye.
Ms. Larson?
Aye.
Motion carries. Couple other items. Just want to mention a stormwater management workshop that is scheduled. The James City County is offering this workshop for property owners and homeowners association representatives. On Saturday, October 13th, from 8:30 in the morning till 10:30, the workshop provides an overview of stormwater drainage systems and best management practices, and will be held at the James City County Recreation Center on Long Hill Road. They need, people would need to call 253-6784, 253-6784. As seating is limited, to let us know you're coming, and then we'll be sure to have a seat for you. And then, as you know, absentee voting for general election began September 21st, so people that are interested in absentee voting, it is time to make sure you're getting the things in the mail and making those dates. The first would be to register for voting, if you're not yet registered, by October 15th, and then a phone number for the local voter registration office, 259-4949, 259-4949. And then, finally, Hurricane Michael. I don't think that will be a significant issue for our community, but I do want all of you to know that our staff is tracking that and are in conversations with the Virginia Department of Emergency Management. As of today, it appears to be mostly a rain and some wind, as rain is expected to start Thursday morning. We could see up to four inches of rain, which is a lot of rain over a short period of time. We would see wind, the strongest which could occur Friday morning. At this time, we're expecting maybe thirty mile-per-hour sustained winds, or, excuse me, thirty mile-per-hour gusts and twenty mile-per-hour sustained winds, so it should not be overly significant. You could see power outages with that, if you have trees or tree limbs that fall and do that. And as we know, with recent hurricane floors, these forecasts can change and rather quickly, but at this point, it appears to be an event for us, but not a significant event. As always, we would encourage residents to be prepared now to support themselves, and we say three days with food, water, medicines, et cetera, and our staff will continue to monitor and then advise any changes that may occur. So, with that, that concludes my report this evening.
What day was the stormwater?
The stormwater is this Saturday, October 13th, from 10:30 to 11:30 at the James City County Recreation Center.
Thank you.
10:30 to 11:30?
8:30.
Oh, 8:30 to 10:30. Okay, gotcha. Can I add one more thing? Mr. Stevens, would you please look into the property at 6925 Richmond Road? And the next time we meet, could you please share any kind of progress with the fire cleanup that's out that way? I'd appreciate it. Thank you.
All right. With that, I will ask for a motion to enter closed session for the purpose of a consideration of a personnel matter, the appointment of individuals to county boards and/or commissions pursuant to Section 2.2-3711A1, Code, the Code of Virginia, and two, and that will be the Chesapeake Bay Wetlands Board and the Williamsburg Area Arts Commission, and then consideration of the acquisition of real property for a public purpose where a discussion in an open meeting would adversely affect the negotiating strategy of the public body pursuant to Section 2.2-3711A3 of the Code of Virginia.
Motion.
Mr. Eisenhower?
Aye.
Ms. Sadler?
Aye.